It is now one o'clock and we will pick up where we left off.
You're welcome.
All right, we are now back in session. Mrs. Sullivan?
Article 12.
May we have a motion under Article 12?
Absolutely. Subject: Funding of Design Permitting and Construction of the Seawall Related Duxbury Beach Nourishment Project. I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Mr. Wyler?
Recommendation: Select Board 301 to indefinitely postpone. Finance Committee voted unanimously to indefinitely postpone. I defer to Friend Wyler who will speak to the article.
Just a brief comment. I know a lot of people in the room are here partially because of this article and wanted to explain why it was being indefinitely postponed. As originally proposed, this article was to raise between three and four million dollars. It would allow us to, as matching grants, to apply for grants in the range of 13 to 14 million dollars. The purpose of that was to purchase 400,000 cubic yards of sand which would have enabled us to put sand out in front of the entire length of the seawall. The idea was to put it in front of the existing wall and to use the sand after, if Article 13 passes and we build a new wall, that same sand would be there to protect it. Upon further review, the scope of the article proved to be its undoing. In order to provide the four million, we would have had to borrow the money and as the purpose was to purchase sand, it did not qualify for bonding. And of course, we don't have four million dollars laying around that we could use. Additionally, obtaining that amount of appropriate sand would take years as it is not readily available locally and the cost of transportation limits the distance from which we could comfortably acquire this sand. This IP does not mean we have given up on the concept of beach sand nourishment. We still believe that this program is beneficial to both the existing seawall and any new wall built. Our consultant, Woods Hole Group, and other agencies involved with the permitting process, of all these efforts to rebuild the wall, all feels strongly that sea beach sand nourishment is an integral part of that effort. Consequently, we are currently working with the town of Marshfield on a more modest plan. We currently have sufficient matching funds approved at previous town meetings to proceed. Design work is complete, final permits are expected shortly, and based on how that program works, we can look forward to continue with beach nourishment into the future. Thank you.
Mr. Gittart from the board.
Just for clarification, the actually Select Board voted unanimously to IP Article 12, so as Friend stated, it made perfect sense. The good news is that we can proceed with starting a multi-year phased beach nourishment project, hopefully starting this winter, utilizing CCM funding and matching grants. I think it's important to know why we need to do this project and we can talk about it at the next article, Article 13, but it's important to note that the Select Board voted unanimously to recommend funding the engineering, design, permitting, and construction of the seawall, of which beach nourishment is an integral part of that project and needs to be done for two reasons. The first reason, and why it needs to be done now and we're going to work on it, is that it buys us time, provides our compromised section of the seawall which much needed protection as well as minimizing overtopping while we work on the permitting and grant application process required for the seawall project. And once that nourishment project is completed, like Friend said, it will protect, basically you're talking about actually another seawall in front of the seawall, that's what beach nourishment does, it builds a burb for want of better word. So it buys us time and protects the existing seawall and will protect the future seawall if that passes and more importantly, there's an expectation from the permitting and granting agencies, the Energy Environmental Affairs, CCM, Mass DEP, Mass Wildlife, Natural Heritage, and Endangered Species Program, that beach nourishment and seawall replacement are one integral project. They go together and if we do vote at the town meeting and then on the ballot to proceed with replacement seawall, we have to do beach nourishment. But the good news is we can do it in a phased approach and we'll be applying for CCM granting and we have matching funds. Thank you.
So we have a motion to indefinitely postpone. Now, we haven't had one of those yet at this town meeting and I'm sure many people are familiar with it, but for those of you who aren't, indefinitely postpone an article doesn't mean you're voting against it or you're voting for it. You're just saying we're not going to take any action on it at this point in time for a variety of reasons it's been suggested to you. Are there any questions about what this upcoming vote is? Again, indefinite postponement means we're not going to take it up. It doesn't mean you voted against it or for it. You have a question, my second deck, to my, your, my left.
David Amory, Purdon Road. If this motion or this warrant, this article is indefinitely postponed, how does that affect the status of the next article for the wall?
Well, the wall stands, in terms of town meeting process, Article 13 is the next article. There is a motion to be made on it and we will take it up. If that doesn't answer your question, perhaps you could clarify.
Well, my concern if there's a decision is made about the wall, but then we're on hold for the, with an understanding for the nourishment, I'm just not comfortable with that concept of having a wall approved and not having a clear direction on the nourishment.
Clear direction on nourishment, just to clarify. So we had a meeting last Thursday. We're working together with the town of Marshfield and we're all in agreement that we can proceed with beach nourishment in a phased approach and we've got, CCM have, will basically allow us to apply for a grant. We have matching bunnies and so we intend to start the whole permitting process and the going out for bid and the construction of that beach nourishment in this coming winter. So that's the intent. So by indefinitely postponing it, inviting and voting in support of indefinite postponement will have no impact on the next article. So hopefully that clarifies the question.
Yes, and I think the point you made earlier about the nourishment being important for either the existing wall or the new wall is very important. I just see the nourishment of the beach is the first priority. The beach is the, what gives us Duxbury and it's such an important aspect that we have to keep in mind. I know you all are doing that and you're doing a wonderful job with it, so I certainly appreciate that. We just want to make sure that the nourishment has at least as high a priority in the town as a wall does.
Right. So the Select Board, as I stated, voting unanimously to recommend the seawall replacement project. And as I stated, beach nourishment is an integral part of that project and they go hand in hand and we can't have one without the other.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Hold off on the vote. I'm sorry. If you're looking at your screen on your handheld device and it's blank, on the bottom right-hand corner is an on/off switch. It said funny circle with a line in it and if we've been to lunch and it hasn't been touched in some time, it's turned itself off. Energy conservation. So push that bottom button. As you look at it, it's the button on your right and you should get some figures back on the screen. All right, let's try that, let's try a vote now. When the light goes on, if you're voting for indefinite postponement, press 1. If you're voting in opposition to it, press 2. Voting is closed. The vote to indefinitely postpone passes 185 to 18. Article 13 is the companion article, I guess, described. It has to do with the design, engineering, and permitting of the Duxbury seawall and I believe we have a presentation to be made. So I'm going to ask that we make the presentation right after we move the article. Put the article on the floor and then the first comments will be your presentation.
Funding of engineering, design, permitting, and construction of the Duxbury Beach seawall. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $20 million for the engineering, design, permitting, construction, reconstruction, repair, and/or support of the Duxbury Beach seawall and any and all costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet said appropriation, to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow all or a portion of such sum money under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Sections 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes of the town therefore provided. However, that the appropriation of funds herein shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of a ballot question to exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose from the provisions, oops, sorry, of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called and the Select Board acting pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 80, shall assess betterments of 25% of the total project cost on all properties benefited by the projects for the purposes of recovering a portion of the costs thereof and further to authorize the Select Board and/or its designate to apply for, accept, and expend any federal and/or state grants and/or loans or other public or private funds that may be available for the project to be implied to the entire project up to the date of betterment order and to execute any and all documents and take all other action necessary or convenient to undertake said projects.
Second.
Select Board voted 320 to recommend. Finance Committee voted, do we, was it 80? I think 800 to recommend.
Motion's been made and seconded. We have a presentation from the seawall committee. Could you put?
Oh, it's fine. It is, and there's nuances to it. Oh, the Select Board did revote this article this morning, 500. I stand corrected. In favor.
The Duxbury seawall is part of Duxbury's Barrier Beach and protects more than 200 homes. The seawall also safeguards roads and multiple utilities, including water, sewer, electricity, and gas. The 2,860-foot seawall was built between 1949 and 1963 by the state, county, and town.
The construction of this wall has no interior rebar to hold the wall together. This is why you're seeing a lot of this spalling and cracking. The toe of the wall, which is really the foundation that this wall sits on, does not have any kind of steel sheathing in front of it to protect it. So when we get overlapping wave action, the back end gets scoured and can basically come down underneath the seawall causing it to collapse. That's the reason in 1993, all these rebetment stones were put here to basically hold the wall up from falling over. The new design will be much thicker, it'll be much higher, it'll be reinforced with steel sheathing in the front. Coastal zone management and Division of Marine Fisheries will not let us put any more rebetment stone in front of this to buy time. So it's really a question of, there will be failure at some time, it's just a question of when.
Hi there. Before I begin, I would also like to just take a moment and thank Ted Flynn. Ted's been the Select Board liaison to the seawall committee since we were appointed five years ago and Ted, we're so grateful to the, for the support that you've shown us and for always bringing the humor. We're really going to miss you. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Alicia Babcock, Nine Ocean Road South. So we're really going to miss you and if you get bored and you decide you want to come out of retirement, we have a couple of chairs open in our committee, I'm just saying. And John, we want to say a big thank you to you as well, John Adams, for always being available and willing to crunch numbers for us and getting the info that we need to try to make things work. Our committee is going to really miss you as well. So as you can see behind me, the town seawalls are in rough shape, which is why we're bringing Article 13 to you today for consideration. These seawalls run the length of Duxbury Beach from the Marshfield town line to the Duxbury Reservation property and equal 3,500 linear feet. They were built in 1954, making them 70 years old. Each section of the seawall is 50 feet long and are lined up consecutively end to end. The section you see here is typical of the majority of the sections with a large horizontal fracture. When we have a storm, and it doesn't need to be a big one, the velocity of the waves crash against these old walls, making them highly susceptible to failure. In 2018, the major storm event we had caused severe damage to 950 linear feet out of the 3,500. The section pictured here had one of those horizontal cracks I just showed you before the storm and this is what it looked like after several high tides. Some sections actually broke apart and completely washed away as a result of that storm. The old walls are simply at the end of their life and just couldn't hold up anymore. So the seawalls are represented by the orange line on that map. And the blue line represents the Duxbury Beach Reservation property. Together, we are Duxbury Beach, together, we are the Barrier Beach, and together, we protect the town like a shield. In this photo, you'll see, this is a very narrow strip of land. This is, this is what, this is the Barrier Beach, obviously, drone shot to show how narrow this is. And you'll see one of the most important roads in Duxbury. This is Garnet Road. And the reason most people refer to this section of Duxbury as the Garnet area. Parts of this road are frequently underwater during a full moon or a king tide, but when there's a strong nor'easter or a major hurricane, the overtopping from the waves come across Garnet Road and marry up with the flooding from the bay and the road becomes submerged. This stretch of Garnet also happens to be particularly narrow and one of the areas we worry about, the ocean cutting through to the bay. Behind this area, I'd like you to also notice over here, in the ice. Okay? The ice is not forming in places where it's flowing. Those wavy breaks are from the Cut River. And we'll talk about that more in a few minutes, but I just want you to see how it's moving and the ice is not able to be formed. It's a little delay. Sorry. Okay, so it's important to show Garnet Road from this perspective as well. Garnet Road is the red line and you can see how it runs parallel with the beach and how narrow it is when it runs alongside the orange line. And that is right where the Cut River is. Another area of concern is at the top of this road where that triangle is. That area is actually called Webster Island. The middle of that triangle is where you always see the news reporters standing in the floodwaters during a storm and it's often where you'll find Pete Bucus also helping us pump out all that water. But getting back to the road, the question is, what is that road worth to you? Well, it provides public safety by allowing access to 191 residential properties in the Garnet area as well as access for the residents of Saquish. It's important for emergency vehicles and evacuation since fire trucks can't come over the bridge with the weight restriction. It houses underground utilities, gas, water, and sewer lines that all come from Marshfield. It provides an alternative to the Powder Point Bridge when the bridge is under repair, such as it is now, and anyone going to the beach for a walk now knows when you drive around you coming down Garnet Road. And it provides an alternate route for other weight-restricted vehicles. It reduces the impact of traffic traveling through the thickly settled parts of town like Snug Harbor and Powder Point, which, incidentally, back in the 1930s, was the main reason that the town established the road so that the public would have access to the beach through this alternate route. And lastly, but very importantly, it allows all the heavy equipment and 18 whalers to bring nourishment to the beach to strengthen the shoreline. Catastrophic coastal storm events, nobody likes to think about them, but we have to because they happen. It's one of the reasons that the town has put together the new coastal resiliency task force and it's the reason for Article 13. If we had one of these events and Garnet Road was severed, what would happen? All right, so we run into some pretty serious possibilities. In this example, I'm showing the break in the road in the same place as we've been discussing, but the potential is also there for it to happen up by Webster Island where that triangle is because of the slope and topography and the way the water runs down the street there. Either way, the potential risks are the same. We could stand to lose the salt marsh, which is a valuable natural resource that serves as a vital ecosystem and habitat for wildlife and the fishing industry. Its 1,029 acres also provides a natural coastal resiliency and wave retardation. As I mentioned earlier, the sewer comes into this area from Marshfield. So what if they break? Can you imagine all of that sewage going into the bay into a closed system where the oysters are? The town would lose the ability to nourish the beach because none of the trucks carrying sand can come over the bridge and that would create a challenge for shoreline protection. The town would lose the main access to the beach for recreation and if the residents can't get to their homes and a significant portion of the area were destroyed, no one would build and property values would precipitously decline and that would ultimately lead to a loss in property taxes that the town would have to absorb and make up for. Here's that beautiful salt marsh. I've outlined the edge and read for you so you can see better where the marsh touches the mainland. Notice all the rivers that lie within that 1,029 acres. Now I've highlighted the Cut River for you. It runs directly behind the area protected by the seawalls and it runs right up to Webster Island where that triangle is again, on Bay Avenue. Here's a little clearer shot of Webster Island. The top arrows. The top arrows, over here, and over here, represent the direction that the water flows when the water comes over the wall. This area is not receiving water from the bayside. All the water that collects in there is coming from over the wall. The arrow on the left is showing you Cut River again. Inside the circle is the bowl that floods from the overtopping. And that's where all the news reporters go, and that's the area that is always getting pumped out. Now I'm gonna back it up, so you can see what the concern is. If there's a seawall failure, yes, the houses get it first. Then the road gets it, but then, it's the town. A lot of those roads and neighborhoods are built on floodplains. And with the bay being so shallow, it won't be able to withstand the flow of water. I do want to mention that these rivers go both ways. The risk is, obviously, we're talking about the water coming down the rivers and through all those little streams toward the town, but it also goes the other way as well, which is a big contributing factor for the flooding that we get from the bayside. An example of this was from the storm we had two days before Christmas. We had 60 mile an hour wind gusts from the south, and it pushed the water right up, and it caused terrible flooding to the Pine Point section. This is also happening to the Black River when water pushes its way up toward the town. And that's over here. So now, let's bring it a little closer. Look what's sitting right there at the end of the marsh. The High School Athletic Center and the turf field. To the right is Standard Shores, where you can see the Cut River widens and flows right toward it. I don't think anybody in this room wants to see that get disturbed or anything bad happen to that facility, or to Standard Shores. So let's go back and reset for a minute. How are we gonna protect everyone in town, including the Gurnet residents? Yes, there are all sorts of resiliency projects that the town is exploring through Envision Duxbury, and with the help now of the Coast of Resiliency Task Force. They're looking to help these low-lying areas on the mainland, but these projects are years down the road. And they're on a wish list. The seawall, as you've heard today, is a top priority project for the town, because of all the reasons I've shown you. And it's one of only a couple of coastal resiliency projects designed and ready to go. In fact, it was a top priority back in 1954, too, when the original wall was built, and for similar reasons. So the purpose of the seawalls really hasn't changed. What has changed is how we build the seawalls now. Now they're built to last for decades. The new wall stands almost five feet higher. It contains coated rebar reinforcement, where there is none now. The concrete used is high-performance and able to withstand almost 6,000 pounds per square inch of impact. The concrete is mixed with corrosion inhibitors for extra rebar protection. There is weathering steel sheeting driven eight to 10 feet into the ground below the footing. It has weep holes for drainage, so that the water, if anything splashes over the wall, the water comes through the weep holes, and it doesn't go under the wall, which is what caused the undermining during 2018. It's significantly higher, deeper, and thicker. And at the top, there is a recurve to redirect the wave energy. This is the condition of our current protection. These walls have served the town well for 70 years, but they're way past the end of their useful life. Waiting to do this project only puts everyone at risk and makes it more expensive. The rest of these walls will fail. It's just a matter of time. We don't have any control over Mother Nature. We've been very lucky that we haven't had another no-name storm, but something will eventually happen. So the time is now. We don't want 2018 to happen again. It's a lot of force for those old walls. So, I ask you today to please consider voting yes for Article 13. Thank you very much.
As I previously stated, the Select Board has voted unanimously unanimously to support this project. And I can tell you, it was not an easy road to get to this point. I mean, let's face it, what we know today, in this day and age, what we know, we would not be building a seawall. All right? But we got a seawall, and we have a community of 272 homes behind that seawall that are protected from a direct hit. And as you've seen in the presentation, that seawall is well past its useful life. So I think, in the end of the day, we kind of got through that nod hole. And, as I said, we agreed that we would recommend, and we worked hard to support that replacing of that seawall. So the next part of the conversation came, "Well, if you're gonna do that, are we gonna charge betterments? Who's gonna pay?" All right? The town, we had debates, maybe the town should cover 100% of the cost. But in the end, the Select Board voted unanimously to assess, to recommend assessing betterments of 25%. And any grants, any funds we get in, go towards the project cost until betterments are ordered. So, how does this recommendation affect me personally? It affects all of us. So, funding 75% of the cost of the seawall, the $20 million we're talking about, will result in additional tax burden on the average single taxpayer of $164 a year. And this amount applies to everybody in the town, including, obviously, those living behind the seawall. They will be assessed a betterment, and at 25, it will range between $16,000 a year to $1,200 a year. Again, that range is depending where you are on the seawall and how much frontage you own that seawall. So, why should I vote in favor? I think Alicia's put some pretty strong arguments in favor. You could look at it two ways, actually. In addition to what's been described, you could look at it kind of like an insurance policy, if you want a better word, to put it bluntly. That area, that community generates about $1.5 million of property tax that comes into the general fund and funds our services, right? So we lost that through a direct hit, that we didn't replace that seawall, and it, we had that big storm come through and wiped out the community. We would collectively have to find another $1.5 million, which works out to about approximately $262 per year for the average single taxpayer, right? So, maybe that's an economic way to look at it, pretty blunt, but you could look at it that way. But I think, more importantly, I think we should vote in favor of it, because I think it's about community, right? I think, deep down, nobody in this room would be okay with folks losing their homes. And that's ultimately what we're asking to do, to step up. It's a tough ask. We fully realize that. I fully realize that. We all fully realize that. Select Board does, and I know the Finance Committee does, everybody does. It's a tough ask, but for the sense of community, I do hope that you vote in favor of recommending, of approving Article 13. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Emmett Sheehan, 122 Powder Point. So the charge is $20 million. Are you saying the Selector recommending the seawall, Butters, will be paying 25% of that, or half? Okay, so, in reality, we'll be paying the 15 million? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the back my right. Carver. Oops. Doug Carver, Truck Farm Lane. I would like to hear an explanation of why the stones can't be used, what the restriction is on that. I wonder why, because you go up and down the coast. I fish a lot, I boat a lot, and I see all these different conditions that work very well. One place that stands out is Matapoisette, has done a great job of protecting their residences. Why there isn't greater use of jetties? And you can get a good example of that if you just go up to Marshfield. On the betterment and the applying of grants and other funding that may come in to offset this, are you saying that it will be applied? If we got $5 million, would it apply to the 20 million, and then the betterment would still be 25%? Just want to clarify that, because there was some discussion in the articles, paper, that they might get forgiven any betterment at all. And then, just a overview look, long-term, I don't know if everybody agrees with the whole global warming and whatever you want to call it, but the water seems to be rising, the winters are getting milder, there's more water, period. I know, I lived down there one winter, it's wonderful, and I wouldn't want to take it away from anybody, but there are some practical considerations when you live on waterfront. It's a risk, period. When you have houses that are there, that have been there since probably the '30s and earlier, a lot of them are low, and they haven't been, some of them have been raised, some of them have not. I don't know if they were required to be raised, but if you drive down there, there are a lot of them that are still not very far above grade. That makes them particularly vulnerable to rising water. There are a lot of towns, and I will refer to Matapoisette as a good example, that requires these oceanfront properties, as soon as they do any kind of work to them, they have to raise them up. I believe it's 18 feet above sea level, which isn't the most attractive thing, but they keep their homes. And it protects them a lot more than putting up a stone wall does. That's something I think that should be made conditional, and strongly conditional about any kind of improvements that people do down there, because it's gonna solve a lot of the short-term problem. And I say short-term, say 15, 20 years. But another, just a perspective that I try to keep in mind, this water problem is inevitable, and it's, the trend is to get worse, not better. And if you're talking about protecting properties and losing the revenues and all that stuff, one of the problems, again, related to the height of the finished floors of these houses, is if you didn't have that elevation to protect, you could go in and you could build up, like they're doing up the street. You could build up that barrier with sand and fill and gravel and a lot of things that don't get used elsewhere, and protect it that way, more of a natural way, and stop the water, put a slowing down of the water. Just a hell of a lot easier to do to move a lot of dirt and sand and stuff around than it is to keep building walls higher and higher. Already, the wall's going up five feet higher than it used to be. You keep building that thing up, at some point, you're up way beyond the top of the houses, but you're still protecting these houses. And I don't get the thinking about leaving the houses where they are. Instead, it might even be cheaper to raise all the houses up as part of this project and get them up away from the water problem. When the water does come in, it goes under the house, goes back out, you clean up, and you go back to enjoying what you have down there. Just something to reconsider, because I'm disturbed by seeing the houses down there and thinking about the next storm coming over the wall, water coming up through the river, and it's just gonna be flooded anyway. And again, I lived down there for a while, and I go down there often enough to have a pretty good picture of what happens when these storms come in. I love the storms, but they're a problem. They're gonna get expensive.
All right, I think there's sort of a mix of question and statements in that, so we'll do our best to address it. And I think Mr. Buckus seemed to be getting up to answer some of it, so why don't we start with Mr. Buckus? He's been patiently waiting to respond.
Afternoon. Peter Buckus, DPW Director, and that's a long list, but I can take a shot at the Rock question. Coast Division of Marine Fisheries will not permit us to put rebutment stones out in front of the wall. If they did, I would line the whole wall with rebutment stones. They are concerned with cloud habitat. And even just to get a temporary permit in an emergency situation, we went through hoops. And that was a very, very small amount of stone, but they just, unless all those state agencies sign off on the permit, you can't build it.
Thank you. Mr. Wyler.
Concerning the betterments, in response to your question, assuming the wall costs $20 million, and we get $5 million in grants prior to the assessment of betterments, it will go to reduce the entire cost of the project. So it's, so being 20 million, it'll be 15, and each side will benefit. We'll then charge 75% for the town portion against 15 million, and 25% for the betterments against the 15 million. So we both, both sides benefit. Now, apparently, there's a technicality, after the project is built and the betterments have been assessed, we can't split it. At that point, it would go against the town's side. But by then, the project's done, and you don't get many grants after projects are done. It's during the process, we hope, to be getting most of that grant money. So most of it would be applied to the whole amount, and it would benefit both sides. I want to make it clear, too, that all of the residents in this neighborhood are going to be getting the same assessment that we are getting as taxpayers that aren't living out in that area. The betterments are on top of that. So that average number per household that Fernando mentioned will be applied to them as well as us. And these betterments, ranging from $1,200 to $15,000 a year, are on top of that. So we feel pretty comfortable that they are, in fact, paying their fair share. Any more than a 25% burden would make, you know, you go to 50% or some number like that, it would be $30,000 a year, over 30 years. So we thought that was prohibitive. And we, 25 was not a comfortable number. I mean, I'm not happy to do this to these people. I'm not happy to do it to all of us. We all have to live with this. But we do feel it's important that this wall is our wall. The state and the feds, while they were involved with the original construction, have washed their hands of it. It's not theirs anymore, it's ours. It's a piece of town infrastructure that we think- It's a piece of town infrastructure that we think we have an obligation to maintain, whether it's to protect the, as we mentioned in the presentation from Mrs. Babcock, whether it's to fix, protect those homes or the marshland behind it or the town behind that. It's a part of our community and we think it's important that we do this. One of my members wanted to mention that our vote at FinCom was the financial vote. We voted on the betterments. We never really looked at the project itself as whether it was a yes or a no. The selectmen said they wanted it and we were moving forward on the financial aspect and the betterments is what we approved. And I don't know about the jetty. I just, I don't have the technology to address that issue.
Lester Lloyd, Washington Street. I just have three questions, which I think will be relatively easy to answer. This is for 2,800 linear feet, give or take. I understand there are 3,500 linear feet of existing walls, so the first, my first question is, are they in good, is the remainder, remaining, whatever that is, 6, 800 feet in good shape? And that's why it's not included. The second question is...
Can I try to answer as you go so we don't forget what you asked? There was a wall that was replaced, part of the wall was replaced in 2020, 900, I believe it was 950 linear feet. So that's been removed from, because that wall's already there. You saw pictures of it up here. Question one.
Thank you. Second question, I just couldn't hear what Mr. Guitard said. In terms of if we did lose 1.5 million dollars of property tax, that would actually have an impact on the average house of Duxbury of an additional $150 per year?
262.
262, so it's...
If we lose, if, yeah, if we lose that 1.5 million of tax revenue coming into the general fund, it would cost us to replace it $262 per the average single taxpayer.
Thank you. Which is thus, in effect, if that worst case happened, we'd be $100 more in the hole than if we solved this, because the cost of doing this is $164 per, dollars per average taxpayer, as I understand. And then, my third question is, this is a somewhat unfair question, but are we relatively confident about the 20 million being a cost that we will incur in, whenever that would be 2024? Thank you.
Hi, Lester. Yeah, we are. In fact, what we did is we went to Amory Engineering, Pat Brennan, and I asked him to ask the guy that did the job out there now, Northern Construction, to give us an updated estimate that built in certain factors for inflation, because the price of materials has gone up so much, and they were able to do that. And it came in between 18 and 1/2 and $20 million. Short of going to bid, that was the best way to do it, to have a number to bring to you here today.
Just back to your question about the overall condition of the existing sections. 16 years ago, when I became DPW Director, the first thing I did was get a grant from DCR to have Bourne Consulting do a full assessment of the seawall. Many of the sections back then, 16 years ago, were either poor or failing. So you can imagine what they are now.
Yes, Paige Valentine, 50, Washington Street. I have four questions. The first is, who owns the seawall and the land under it?
We have determined that the town owns the seawall.
And the land under it?
It's by way of easement.
Second question, who owns the beach?
Third question? I'm just kidding. I think easement is the answer there as well. We'll shore that up for you. But let's move to the third one. Maybe we can get to the second one in a minute.
Third question, who is allowed to use the beach in front of the seawall?
That's been an interesting question that's been asked many, many times, and Betsy actually knows the answer. What is it? It's, no, no, no. It's for fishing and fowling.
Fish, foul, oh, yes. Okay. I'll make a stab at it because obviously someone doesn't want to. There's mass general law that allows people to walk down the beach to fish, fish, foul, and, where's Jakey? Is he still here? Navigate. And, but I don't think that's what you're asking. I think that you would look at some of these, the deeds, some are high watermark, some are low watermark, depending on the age of the deed. I've dealt with properties before that had, you know, owned part of the bay or the salt marsh. So it depends on, sometimes on the property. So if you're asking if there is, the easements that have been granted were for the, one easement was for the work on the seawall and was a certain number of feet on either side to allow the work to be done. And the same goes for the sand, but basically it's, the easement allows the general public to travel by foot. So that's my reading of it. When I read the easements and I have copies of them, that was what was allowed. Now, what mass general law would allow or what, you know, future easements would allow, I can't tell you. But as it stands now, my understanding is that fish, foul, navigate, and easements for the work, and easement by foot.
It seems to me that if we're going to pay $15 million for the seawall, that the citizens of the town should be allowed to at least stop walking and rest and have a picnic or go swimming or not be worried about having access to this beach.
I hear you.
Okay. My last question is, what sorts of access will there be through the seawall to the beach? Are there going to be stairways? Will this weaken the seawall or, I mean, how are you going to get to the beach if you're on the other side of the seawall?
I'm going to...
There's breaks in the seawall. There's breaks in the staircases now.
Yeah, there is, there is an existing access on one of the roads. I believe it's on Ocean Road South that allows you to sort of intersect the seawall itself.
My name is Paul Brogner, 90 Humphreys Lane. I'm one of the engineers on the seawall committee. There's one set of stairs on Ocean Road South that is still to be reconstructed. We did construct one new set of stairs at the southern end of Ocean Road North, but there is no set of stairs up by Webster Island and the horseshoe, as we call it. Now, whether we put one in, I don't think the phases two, three, and four plan set includes any new stairs. It's just a replacement of what is there right now.
So you don't think this would weaken the seawall to have stairs?
Could you repeat that, please?
Yes. Do you think stairs would weaken the seawall?
Under normal conditions, no. The reinforcing, the structural integrity of the wall, as Ms. Babcock briefed a short time ago, the upsizing, the robustness of the new wall is significantly bigger, better, and stronger than the existing one, believe it or not, that we all know lasted 70 years. So I'll come back in 70 years and we can talk about it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, woman at the microphone.
Kathy Palmer, again. And I live on Powder Point Avenue, but I know something about this. When you have an easement, it means somebody else owns the property. And I used to be in the Attorney General's office and I've written several briefs on this issue. And Massachusetts is unique in this country, that the property owners along the sea, along the coast, they own to the low watermark, whereas all the other states, along the east coast at least, I don't know about the west coast, they use the Roman rule, which is that the owner of the property that abuts the beach only owns to the high watermark. So the answer is, the property owners own the beach. And some owners may allow people to go across their beach even if they're not carrying a pole or, you know, one of the three reasons that people have a right to walk. Others won't allow them. And probably those steps are for the owners, because we were recently out there and there's signs all over the place saying, private property, keep out. So it made it very clear to us that we were not welcome to walk on their beach. And I don't know if that's going to change. The other thing that we noticed is that there's a house right in the middle of the road. So I'm not sure if anybody was overseeing the original construction, much less whether or not those houses should be raised, which is, I think, what happened up on the north shore. They required that beaches, I mean, that houses along the beach had to be raised. And it's, there are just a number of issues. The other thing that I noticed at the special town meeting was that they showed a list of all the people who advertise as BMBs, and a lot of them were properties out there. So they don't have the special permits, but evidently they're renting their properties as BMBs. So I don't know how many residents are there. I mean, there's a lot we don't know. I'm just saying.
Thank you. A gentleman in the, in the blue?
I have 15 questions.
Could the gentleman in the blue rephrase that?
Actually, I have three questions. First, whether stairway is proposed for the seawall, will there be full accessibility access to the beach anywhere along this new seawall?
Do we have an answer?
None that I have seen so far.
Is it a requirement for this project to comply with the Architectural Access Board or ADA for this access for everybody to the beach in that location?
There is access currently at the end of Ocean Road North. It's a large opening that is at grade. And that was part of the last seawall project, the one two years ago. So the, the, the south end of Ocean Road North has a staircase. It's not handicap accessible, but the other side, the other end of that road has it at grade. Right now, it's closed off because of the winter storms. Soon as April rolls around, DPW goes down, pulls out all the, all the plates, and it's open to the public.
So the wall will provide, there'll be some access for everybody, basically, for anybody along the wall? Second question is, if the project, is it fully permitted? And if the town does vote to proceed with the wall or vote to support the wall, when do you expect construction to begin and be completed?
We're just checking on the condition of the permit.
There are no stairs.
Yeah. Yeah, town manager just told me that CZM and Marine Fisheries would not allow more stairs. And we fought really hard on the last round of, on the new wall, to get that one set of stairs, and they wanted us to put steel or metal stair casing in there that would have ended up being twisted into pretzels after the first big storm.
So there would be access for somebody in a wheelchair, for instance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And the entire project is not permitted as of yet.
So there's no, no specific plan, construction start date at this point?
Correct.
And last question is, and it touches back to a question I asked a while ago, and that is, just getting up, if you could describe to us what Woods Hole's input has been for this wall? Have they been weighing in on the design of the wall? This is apart from the nourishment, maybe certainly nourishment's related to that, but have they been part of the design process in this case, for the wall itself? Woods Hole has been consulted on the sand aspect, not the design. Amory Engineers has been doing the design of the wall. So the interface, has the interface had much discussion along with the design of the wall? The two are clearly interconnected. Yeah, they are, they are working together in consultation with one another, so when one does one thing, the other is very aware of what the other's doing. Is that what you mean? Thank you. We just want to make sure they're, as you know, working together on this. So we're getting the best out of Woods Hole and the nourishment and that total aspect of the, of the new wall. Thank you.
A gentleman on my left on the lower level, who's been patiently waiting.
Bill Tenor at One Water Street. Can you comment on why the seawall at the northernmost terminus, or southernmost terminus, ended where it has? And is there expectation that the beach nourishment project would prevent further erosion so that it wouldn't need to be extended sometime in the future, further to the north, or to the south, rather? Thank you.
That existing seawall down at the southern end is just where it was built back in the 50s. We have no intention of going any further than what you see there. Whether beach nourishment would be applied there would be up to the state to determine. And then, after that, it gets into the DPR property, which is private property.
On my right on the lower level, the woman who's been waiting patiently and asking questions, wants to ask a question?
Sure. Candice Martin, 59, Garnet Road. Obviously, I live on Garnet Road, but I'm, one of the properties that does not have a seawall. So it's the 300 feet of section in between Garnet Road seawall and the Bay Ave seawall. I can tell you personally, sacrificial sand dunes are good in some areas and not in others. When I, we rebuilt our home, we did have no wall protection. We added sand to protect the home, and within two years, the 20 yards, cubic yards of sand washed away as well as took away 12 feet of our front, our oceanfront property. We had to build our own wall. So there's a study that was done for the town in 2013 that proved the seawall is needed for this area because of the wave action and the need to protect that area. If you look at the numbers, we're asking 20 million that lasts 50 to 70 years. If you've heard that just the beach nourishment would cost you 12 million every, maybe it lasts 10 years, you're talking about much more sand to protect that area. If the properties all wash away, you would have to build sand dunes. You're talking $100 million of sacrificial sand dunes to protect that area. So I understand 20 million is a lot, but the alternative is far greater. Thank you.
Thank you. A gentleman in the upper level on my left.
Tom Nie, 590 Bay Road. Sorry about that. My questions have been answered about ownership of the wall and ownership of the beach. My last remaining question is, have the property owners assured or made some kind of assurances that other residents of town can use the beach even above the high watermark?
Well, that seemed to be a quick and unanimous answer.
I would just like to address the private-public question. It's one that comes up very often, and it's difficult to answer because it's not consistent as you go down the beach. I'm on Ocean Road South, so I anticipated this question today, and I referred back to not only my own deed, but to the deeds of all of my neighbors on my street. And they all read the same. Our meets and bounds... Our meets and bounds end at the edge of the seawall. They don't go under the seawall. We have rights to the beach that are, you know, part of our deed. But we don't own the beach in front of our house. We own to the seawall. Now, as you go down the beach, things get a little more complicated. When you hit Cable Hill and beyond, the, the deeds read differently. So that's why this is such a difficult thing to answer because some people do own out onto the beach, but it's not consistent and it's not all the way down. And that's the problem. I can tell you myself, being at the end, adjacent to the reservation, there have been, I, it happens every summer, you know, especially with, with the pullovers being such a challenge, that, that northernmost parking lot is used a lot. People get out and they scatter, they go in all different directions. I often have tons of people in front of my house. I have never once asked anyone to get off the beach. It's not my job. And as far as, there was a comment about someone seeing a sign that said, you know, unwelcome or don't trespass or something. That is a sign that someone had up on Cable Hill after the wall fell over. That was a home that had to, that, that had almost 40 feet of frontage that was lost within two hours of that storm. And they had to throw emergency boulders in that hole to stop it from caving in, or all those houses were going to wind up in the water. As you can imagine, that was not a very safe situation. Those boulders were not properly placed. They were dumped in an emergency just to stop the, the erosion. And that erosion eroded onto someone's property within their deed. So I hope you understand that that person was concerned about other people's well-being. There are kids that walk on the beach and play, teenagers, all sorts of, all sorts of things go on on the beach. That person didn't want to be liable for anybody getting hurt on their property. That's why that sign was there. It wasn't to deter anybody or make anybody feel unwelcome at all. It was for safety. And that sign has not been there since 2019.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
A woman on the lower level to my left?
Thank you. I just have one question, which relates to the language in Article 13 about the Select Board and/or its designee having the right to apply for federal or state grants. My question applies not only to Article 13, but other articles going forward in the future. I understand that Duxbury does not have a grant writer and that the majority of our surrounding neighborhood municipalities do. And I was wondering how we go about applying for these grants if we don't have a grant writer?
In recent weeks, we've talked about the means of being able to apply for grants and what, what do we do in the absence of having a grant writer? There are firms that do provide these services, and I've actually reached out to a number of my cohorts and other communities to find these agencies. And as recently as last week, Thursday, I found two or three that are going to try and help us out because Josh, Representative Josh Cutler was kind enough to earmark some money for us, the amount of about $100,000. So we're going to see if we can use some of that to hire a grant writer to, to pursue some of these avenues for us.
That's great. Thank you.
A woman on the upper level on my right?
Thank you. Regarding citizen rights to be on the beach, I believe that there's, there's some correlation that if the taxpayers pay for the sand that goes on the beach, it confers rights for them to be able to use that beach. But I do not know what the details are, but I think it'd be worth checking. The other thing that goes with access is parking. There's, if a person wanted to go down to the beach in that area, it's very, very difficult to find a place to park. The third thing I just wanted to say that I worry about long-term is that we're stepping onto a, onto a treadmill of continued concrete pouring so that our grandchildren will be facing exactly the same arguments we're listening to today and the same demand that they continue to pour concrete. How much concrete do we see in the future being poured along the beach there? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm starting to feel like we're hearing the same comments and questions over again. All right. We've got three people who seem insistent. Mr. Brogner, gentleman over here, and then a repeat, repeat customer in the back.
Paul Brogner, 90 Humphreys Lane again. Couple of things that we haven't discussed this afternoon that I think all of us should think that are very important. This is just step one. The vote today, where the two-thirds vote gets us through today and today only. Two weeks from today, minus one hour that we lose tonight, we come back to the ballot box. And only a 50, 51% vote is needed to reaffirm or to do something different. So think about that when we deliberate the next few minutes. It's critical. In a different light or in the same light, four, five years ago, we approved the first time the Public Works facility building at between 14 and 16 million dollars. It won here at town meeting, it got defeated at the ballot box. Last year, we came back and won on both for $26 million. Think about it. Okay? In a different light, 10, 12 years ago, we did the same thing with the Public Safety Building. Fire station addition, police station tear down and rebuild on Mayflower Street. It won here, day one, it lost two weeks later. Came back the next year at more money. Fortunately, we won. So the economics of doing something today, I'm an engineer, I'm not an accountant, make a lot of sense. Equally as important, as many of us know, the Powder Point Bridge is scheduled for reconstruction fiscal '27 by the Commonwealth. We will lose access to the beach for two years based on the current schedule. That's two years full-time. Think about that. The reconstruction of this wall hopefully can be done within three years, or at least most of it. That's critical to having a strong enough road on Gurnett Road from Rainbow Bridge to support the town with 100% of its needs for at least two construction seasons. And that's 80 million. And hopefully it gets done without an additional cost. One last thing I want to say is, in my engineering business, I do a lot of work on the waterfront. I know the question has been and still remains, who owns the damn beach? Okay? All right? Most of the Gurnett Road area is registered land. It's land that's been ordered by a certain plan, attested to by the judge. It doesn't change. From the engineering work that we do in town, the surveyors have told us the wall is near, at or near the property line. We had a number of drill holes that we engineers and surveyors used. Some drill holes are still there, and they're on the, on the, the wall itself. We lost a bunch of drill holes five years ago in that 950 section before the wall fell in. So theoretically, that is it. When we go before the zoning board for tear down and rebuilds, usually it's the mean-high water line and back that the homeowners usually use. So if you want to think about the mean-high water line at or near the bottom of the wall right now, I can tell you the homeowners do not own below the mean-low water, the mean-high water line, I'm sorry. Okay? I grew up in Marshfield, as I know a few other people have here. That beach is the same. It's public. The people that live on the bay side of Gurnett Road, they have no waterfront, but they have the same access to the beach as we all do here. And I hate to say this, but a number of people have been talking since last year when the beach was closed, as long as it was, the overflow for the SUVs was on the southern side of Ocean Road South, right next to the south end of the existing wall. And many people love this area. They'd park in the sand, they'd walk through the roadway, cross the, the walkway itself and, and over to the beach, and they had a great time. So if we had more access to the beach, we'd have more people over in this area of Duxbury. But again, from an engineering viewpoint, at or below the mean-high water line is not private property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen in the blue?
Wayne Dennison, 320 Stanish Street. My question has not been asked before, so I, I think I can at least deal with that concern of Mr. Toffey. There is a 25% betterment assessment proposed in this article. In order to propose a betterment, there has to be an analysis that provides that the folks who are benefited by this improvement will not be disproportionately impacted by the betterment. I just, and it's a question I think for the person immediately to my right, or to the finance committee generally, is that how did we come to 25% is the appropriate betterment amount? Because quite frankly, if we, we approve the wall and assess a 25% betterment, but the residents in that area think that's disproportionate, we have just invited a lawsuit.
As we do every day.
Well, me and you both, right? So...
The, and, and we had quite a bit of conversation since we were discussing this. We came up with methodology that was not vetted by any, anyone that was a legal partner, although our town council has also cautioned us that, that in any, any betterment situation, we would be open to suit. We tried to come up with what we thought was a fair apportionment. And if, if we were looking for a rock-solid guarantee that no one would sue us, then I would join you on that island, Wayne, and it would be a lovely place to live. We tried to look at the, the betterment over the course of paying it over 30 years and keep it to a reasonable percentage of what the house was assessed for today. If indeed these properties are washed into the sea, they're worth nothing. So it seemed to be a pretty fair exchange. But a guarantee that we won't be sued? I wouldn't want to put you in a position where you lose your home due to lack of income. And I, so I would say that would not happen.
Gentlemen in the red? And then maybe we're easing up on a vote?
Doug Carver again. The, the one question I asked that may, maybe somebody from the, from the town here can answer is the minimum finished floor elevation for new construction? And I would assume from past experience that that would apply to remodels. Is there anyone here that might be able to address that? I used to know it, but it's changed, so I don't know what it is now.
I see somebody's jumped up, and I think we have an answer for you.
I hope so.
And there's a second part to that after we know what it is.
I've been waiting to answer that question for a little while. Hoping you'd come back around to it. I'm Jim Wazlowski, I'm the building commissioner. Every area in town that is subject to a flood hazard area, depending on the flood area, there's different elevations that the house needs to be built to as a minimum standard by Massachusetts Building Code. So for an A-zone, which is a non-velocity zone, it's, the design elevation is the base flood elevation typically 11 feet plus one foot to the finished floor. In a velocity zone, which is more what you see along the seawall, is base flood elevation, it's 17, Paul's confirm it's 17, but that's to the lowest structural member. So that's any beam associated to any pilings or anything. So the house is, you know, significantly higher in those areas. And to address your question that you, you know, fully, because you expressed it a little differently, was that what if the town invested in raising all these houses? Right? So I did a little quick math on that. It, it would equal somewhere around $30 million to do that based on the number of houses. But here's the issue with that. If the town did something like that, we still have unprotected infrastructure and everything out there. Now, what the building code addresses is that if anybody does any improvements to their house out there, what triggers compliance with flood zone requirements is a substantial improvement that's determined at 50% of the assessed value of the house, not including the land. And that's done by, you know, we do a number of things to determine that. It can be, you know, real estate comps, all kinds of things. The other thing that triggers that is any improvements to 50% of the perimeter of the structure that supports that house. So if, if a potential, you know, a building was destroyed or some of the foundation was destroyed, they would have to comply with the flood zone if they had to repair more than 50% of the perimeter of the structure. So there's quite a bit there that anyone that does work has to elevate the house. But the big, the big, you know, elephant in the room is that the wall, the, the area needs to be protected in order to protect all that infrastructure and the future of the, the temporary stewards that are going to own this property as it goes on in life. And, and that's the big subject here. You know, it, it doesn't get any cheaper as you move on down the road, and that's, that's for certain. So hopefully that addressed your question.
Yeah, you might be able to, because it sounds like you've done the math. This, what, what is there, 116 homes out there, is it? Roughly?
I think 272. I estimate, I did my quick math based on 200 homes, just at about $150,000 just to elevate a home.
So about how many of them were not, were, were old-school elevations, like three or four feet above grade?
There's quite a few houses that haven't been raised out there.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And, and I know we do need to protect the marsh and all that stuff, too. I very...
Yeah, there's a lot more infrastructure involved, of course.
But, but that's the, okay, that helps. I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Monitor, I'd like to move the question.
Mr. Wyler, I accept that motion.
Second.
Motion to move the question is non-debatable. What Mr. Wyler, what Mr. Wyler's asking for is that we stop debate, and we've been at this for something over an hour, and we vote yes or no. Yes, if you vote yes, it means you've heard enough, you're ready to make a decision. I'm then going to ask you to vote yes or no on, on the article. And if you vote no, we will continue the discussion. It takes a two-thirds vote to move the question. Does that make sense? Everybody understand? Understand? Okay. I'm ready for a vote then. When the light turns green, yes, if you're ready to, if you want to move the question and go on to the vote, and no, if you'd like to continue discussing it. Voting is closed. The vote to move the question wins 201 to 33. So now we're on to the motion that's before you, the motion that Mrs., Mrs. Sullivan said some time ago. I don't think we need to repeat it. We've made no amendments to it. So I'm going to ask you to vote it. Vote yes if you're in favor of, of the motion under Article 13, and no if you're opposed to it. All right. Voting is open. Voting is closed. Motion passes, 164 yes, 69 no. And frankly, without suggesting this is a good or bad eye... And frankly, without suggesting this is a good or bad idea, I will echo what Mr. Pragner said, and that is just the beginning of a two-step process. This still has to go to a ballot vote, which happens two weeks from today. Over in the Steel Building, polls are open from eight to eight. You vote yes on it at, at the, at the general election, it will go forward. If you vote no, it may stop. Article number 14, Mrs. Sullivan.
Subject PFAS monitoring and sampling at the town transfer station. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $165,000...
There we go.
Yep, there we go. To fund hydrogeological evaluation and a groundwater monitoring and sampling program related to a PFAS groundwater impacts located down gradient from the current town transfer station on Mayflower Street, including all incidental and related expenses, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $165,000 from free cash, said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Select board voted 5-0 to recommend. Finance committee voted 9-0 to recommend.
Any questions on, on Article 14? We have one. The woman on my left on the lower level.
Thank you. Tanya Treveson, 21 Tinker's Ledge Road. I'm also with the Duxbury Safe Water Committee. I just wanted to get some clarification as to the term down gradient from the transfer station. Does that mean also regard, well, regardless of which direction down gradient is, that is the PFAS that is migrating toward Heritage Lane and the residents there, as well as the wetlands, as well as the cemetery?
Do we have someone to answer that question?
Mr. Moderator, our engineer, Sean Healy, is here to answer just that question.
Very good. Mr. Healy. Mr. Healy, are you a resident of the town of Duxbury?
Hi.
Please?
No.
No. Sean, I'm going to ask for permission for, for the, for the engineer, Mr. Sean Healy, and what firm are you with?
I'm with Weston and Sampson Engineering.
Weston and Sampson Engineering, to speak, to speak before town meeting? Do I have a motion?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, it's been moved and seconded. We're going to have a vote. It's a majority vote. All those in favor of letting our engineer speak? Press, say, press one, opposed, press two. Voting, voting is closed. Motion passes 174 to four. The floor is yours. Go ahead, Mr. Healy.
Thank you. My name's Sean Healy. I'm an LSP with Weston and Sampson, and we've done the preliminary evaluation of the, the transfer station, and I've identified PFAS impacts and the groundwater emanating from the transfer station. And our next step in this process is to perform a hydrogeological evaluation, which will consider the sources of the impacts, or potential sources of impacts throughout this area of Duxbury, which would both be down gradient of the landfill and cross gradient of a potentially cross gradient and upgrading of the landfill. So the hydrogeological evaluation would include evaluation of all, all locations within the area of the, the transfer station, including impacts that have been identified at McNeil landfill as part of that evaluation. And did I answer the question? I'm sorry, I didn't write down.
Yeah, just to clarify, we were concerned that that study would reach toward the residents who live on Heritage Lane, because there was some evidence that the PFAS was leaching into that area, as well as the wetlands over toward the Evergreen Wells.
Yes, yes, it absolutely would, yep. Really, the intent of the, the evaluation is to evaluate PFAS impacts throughout the region, including all three wells, public, well, public water supply wells, Ever, Evergreen and Partridge and Depot Street. And so there will be some assessment to the western side of the, the transfer station and the landfills, as well as to the southwest of the McNeil dump towards Heritage.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote on Article 14. Voting is open. All those in favor, press one. Motion passes 172 to four. Article 15, Mrs. Sullivan.
Expenditure of opioid settlement funds. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $165,462 to fund the prevention, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery programs as further detailed in the Massachusetts State Subdivision Agreement for statewide opioid settlements, and to meet said appropriation, transfer the sum of $165,462 from free cash, said funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second. Do you have a motion to second? Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the town of Duxbury, we've received $165,462 to date in opioid abatement settlement funds. The Commonwealth has put forth a state subdivision agreement for these statewide opioid settlements that each city or town participating must adhere to. The use of these funds is spelled out into seven major categories. One is for the opioid use disorder treatment, two, support people in treatment and recovery, three, connections to care, four, harm reduction, five, address the needs of parenting women and their families, six, to prevent the misuse of opioids, and implementation prevention education. The town of Duxbury has set up a working group to offer guidance to town management on the best use of these funds. The working group has been working to take the pulse of the community and to understand what is most beneficial to its residents. Currently, the working group is most focused on providing education and awareness. They're also looking at what arrangements can be made with certain nonprofit organizations for clinician for any Duxbury residents in need. Since there is currently no state statute in the Commonwealth that will allow for the rollover of these funds from year to year, it is recommended these funds be appropriated in a separate warrant article to segregate them for their intended purpose until such time legislation actually does adopt something, which I'm, I'm pretty sure at some point legislation will be adopted to, to provide a role revolving fund for these funds. Also, our, our working group has been outside with a table. If you have any personal questions for them, you, you may ask them as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'm going to ask, ask for a vote now on Article 15. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. Article passes 171 to two. Article 16, Mrs. Sullivan.
Establishment of a climate action planning task force. I move that the town vote to establish a climate action planning task force as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Select board voted 4-0 to recommend. Finance committee voted 7-0 to recommend.
Mr. Cerny is chair of the Alternate Energy Committee, and he will be speaking to the article.
First of all, I wanted to assure you, this does not require Proposition 2.5 override, nor a debt, debt exclusion. And I just want to let folks know how we came to this, to propose this article. The Alternative Energy Committee did a greenhouse gas emission study three years ago. It was under the aegis of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, using their data, et cetera. And we termed it at that time that if you looked at these sectors, transportation, stationary sources of emissions, which would be buildings, et cetera, and waste management, that the town of Duxbury, as compared to other community, was about 30 to 40%, depending upon the sector, higher in its energy consumption. So that was, that was concerning. Now, layered on top of that are these initiatives that came from, and legislation passed by the Commonwealth. And I don't know, oh, thank you. Yeah, so we did have this fact sheet to pass out, and if you didn't get it, they're, they're out there. So these, these, this is the legislation that has been recently passed, which sets targets for communities to reach by definite years, as far as greenhouse gas emission reductions. So we, as a committee, looked at that, said, okay, there's, there, there is something that we really have to consider, not only because what the obligations are to communities, but also, most probably, this is going to be, and this has turned out to be the case, that these goals are going to be tied to financial grants, resources for towns that have a climate action plan already adopted. So we thought, this is what should happen, and we thought that we would propose an article at the town meeting so that the town would have a buy-in to this. They would say to us, the committee, and to the town, yes, we believe in this, and we want these things to happen. We want to create a climate action plan for the town of Duxbury. And it's not like we're going to be out there on our own on this, because on the fact sheet, and you can actually go to these towns' individual websites to see what their climate action plans are, some of which are more than 10 years old, the town of Reading, for example, and some more recently adopted. In addition to that, there are other climate action plans that are in the process of being created, Hingham, Plymouth, for example. So earlier today, and I actually had a question about this, there were some capital expenses that were mentioned, one involving the HVAC system at the senior center, and then purchases of vehicles. It turns out that in town, in this town, we already have made steps in the right direction. So, you know, putting solar on, on top of the former landfill, having solar on schools. So there are these things that are happening, but it's fragmented. It's not as if there is this focus to say, we want to be making decisions in this town through the lens, eight, one of the lenses being, what is going to be the impact on our climate, and how can we reduce our emissions? So that's what this is all about in sum, and it's not as if we, as a town, are going to be on our own with this. We have devices from those towns, but I have listed in the fact sheets places, organizations that we can tap into that can help us for free, you know, achieve this. So that's what this is all about. And earlier today, there was a reference to, to Duxbury being a marquee community. So my feeling is, why can we not also be a marquee community with a climate action plan? So I ask you to support this article.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. Article 16, all those in favor, press one. All those opposed, two. Voting is closed. Article passes 146 to 17. Article 17, Mrs. Sullivan.
Approval of the zoning map update by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. I move Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
The select board voted 4-0 to recommend. Finance committee 7-0 to recommend.
This, this is an article that requires a two-thirds vote. Having said that, are there any questions here or comments about this article? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article 17.
Need a recommendation.
Oh, the recommendation of the planning board.
They left. The planning board left.
Do we? Actually, I believe that the planning board submitted that in written form, and it just needs to be read, but that's...
But does he have a script? You got a suit cut on.
Sorry about that. Yeah, all good, all good. Okay, the planning board report to annual town meeting 2023. It's Scott Cassagrande.
Introduce yourself, Scott.
Yep, Scott Cassagrande, chairman of the planning board. Article 17, approval of zoning map update by Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC. The planning board voted unanimously 4-0 to recommend favorably in support of adopting revised zoning maps and amending related language in the zoning bylaws to reference the zoning maps. Let's all look at it. Well, while you're here...
It's a good thing, right?
Excuse me. As long as you're up here, why don't you report on Article 21 as well and, and save the, the up and down part?
I'm going to save that. I was going to come back. All right. Also, Article 21 proposed new local historic districts. The planning board voted unanimously 4-0 to recommend favorably in support of, in support of adding the new districts slash additions to districts, which are voluntarily proposed by the owners of the properties and have been reviewed by the state and met the other obligations as required for inclusion as a district.
Thank you. And that is, that is the report that we, that refers, that we will, that deals with Article 21, which we will be getting to shortly. So having gotten a report of the planning committee, planning board, are there any questions or comments? How about we try that vote now? Article number 17. Article 17, which is the approval of the zoning maps that have been updated by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. I'll ask for voting to be opened. Voting is open. Article passes 149 to seven. Article, Article 18, Mrs. Sullivan.
Citizens petition proposed acceptance of the Evergreen Terrace as a public way. I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
We have a motion and a second to indefinitely postpone Article 18. Are there any questions? We have a question, Mr. Reed? Can we have, do we have an answer?
Upon review at the select board level, they voted not to accept the road as a way, and therefore, by the time it gets here, now it needs to be indefinitely postponed.
So I think we're ready for a vote now. A vote on Article eighteen to indefinitely postpone it. All the, voting is open. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed who indefinitely postpone it, press two. Voting is closed. Article passes one hundred and forty-six to eleven. May we have a motion under, for Article nineteen, Mrs. Sullivan?
Acceptance, no, acceptance of provision of the Massachusetts Veterans Brave Act. I move Article nineteen as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Oh, thank you. Recommendation, select board voted five-zero to recommend. Finance Committee voted nine-zero to recommend.
And Mr. Thorpe, our veterans agent, will be speaking to it. Mr. Thorpe.
Thank you. I didn't retire yet. I normally get direction on benefits that I can offer veterans that they've earned because of their service from three agencies. Department of Defense, DOD, Department of Veterans Affairs, the VA, and the Department of Veterans Services, a state agency that I worked for. In this particular case, this article did not come from those three agencies. It came from the Massachusetts Legislature, and it's called the Brave Act. And I've got two portions of this act that I need separate votes on that hopefully you will support. I've got the copy of the Brave Act with me. It's eighteen pages, and it's, it's got talk about adding committees and adding studies, adding new language to old articles that were passed by the legislature, deleting some language. And you really have to hunt and peck through the eighteen pages to find directives that apply to cities and towns, and we've done that. And while we've got two today, there's actually, I could have added a Part C, but fortunately, we've already taken action on one of the directives in the Brave Act that we didn't have to bring forward to Town Hall, but I just wanted to talk about it. And I wanted to thank DPW for doing the actions for what they did, and their call for putting two reserved parking spaces at Town Hall for veterans. If you can picture going off of Temon Street into Town Hall and bearing right into the parking lot, if you go all the way to the back left and next to the building, there's signage up for veterans parking, so there's easy access to go into the rear of the building. And I thank Peter Butkus, where are you, Peter? Back there for getting that done within his budget. We didn't have to bring it forward here at Town Meeting. If I could have the next slide, which talks about veterans? Thank you. I wanted to give you, before I start, and the two portions to vote on, I wanted to give you a preview of the status of veterans here in town. And according to last year's census, we had five hundred and ninety-eight veterans who owned homes here in Duxbury, but probably the real count is another fifty who are renters in town. They could be living at Island Creek or at the housing authority, or they could be younger veterans who went into the service right after high school, did their two, four, or six years' worth of duty, and are now back home, living with their folks, either working or going to school. If you look at that total number of six fifty, it's only about four percent of the population. When I started this job thirteen years ago, we had well over nine hundred. So we've lost over three hundred of World War II. Actually, I looked at the census, and by birthdate, we still have about a dozen World War veterans left in town that are in their late nineties. So if you look at the last bullet there, four hundred and fifty-three are over, of the five ninety-eight, are over the age of sixty-five. That's seventy-five percent of that five ninety-eight number, and it speaks to the amount of Korean and Vietnam veterans that we have in our, living in this town. And if you remember, the important point there is, back then, we had an important piece of law in place. Anybody remember what that was? It was called the draft. Now it's all volunteer service, so we have a completely different mix of veterans in town, or we will, I should say, over time. Can I have the next slide, please? Okay. Talking about Part A here, and this is really an administrative issue. The town has not formally accepted what's called Clause Twenty-two G. And basically, what that clause, by accepting that particular clause, it allows the Municipal Modernization Act and extends exemptions to veterans who are not owners of their domicile being their place of residence because legal title is held in a trustee, conservator, or other fiduciary for their benefit. So the assessors office has been very, if you will, gracious or whatever, not having this be an issue with any veteran who deserves a property tax exemption, even though their home is in a trust. But we just haven't formally adopted Clause Twenty-two G. So that is what the vote is for, adoption of Clause Twenty-two G. I'm open to questions.
Thank you. And just because he was kind enough to open himself up to, for questions, don't feel obligated to ask them. It's getting late, I apologize. But seriously, are there any questions or comments? Are we ready for a vote? I think we are. So we'll open up voting on Article number nineteen. In favor of it, press one. Opposed, press two.
No, I know, we haven't talked about B yet. I'm needing two votes.
It's one. It's all one vote. You know what? Please leave the voting open for some time.
Okay.
We may have talked about it separately, but it is one vote. It's all encompassing, everything in Article nineteen, one vote.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on to Part B then. Part B, it deals with expansion of the senior...
Sir, can I just hang on just one quick second? There's some confusion going on right now, so we're going to cancel voting that we've done at this point, and we'll call for voting again after we've covered Part B as well. Okay? All right. Please, sir.
So Part B addresses the senior work-off program, and in the Brave Act, it calls for expansion of the Brave Act for veterans regardless of age to include both veterans and widows of veterans to volunteer for the town and earn potentially a property tax abatement of fifteen hundred dollars. The work, I call it work, but the volunteer rate is fifteen dollars per hour. So for a veteran to gain the full fifteen hundred dollar property tax exemption, they would have to volunteer to the town one hundred hours. The current senior work-off program, which is property tax abatement of just one thousand dollars, you have to be over age sixty-five, obviously a homeowner. There was in the past, both an assessment, a home assessment, as well as an income assessment, there were requirements for participating in the senior work-off program. Those two elements have been eliminated. So for seniors, it's just being a resident and over the age of sixty-five. But this particular article, Part B, expands the senior work-off program, again, for veterans regardless of age, both veteran and a widow of veteran, to property tax abatement of fifteen hundred dollars. And I look forward to your support.
We have a question in the back on my right.
Drinking, drinking, is it Lake Shore Drive? Thank you, Mr. Thorpe, for your due. I have a question more about how this goes. If someone's getting a certain amount for a certain amount of disability, can they still do the work-off program as well?
Uh, pardon? No, excuse, senior work-off program.
No, a veteran. If they're, like, say they get, you know, they get, like, say they get a disability of ten percent, and they get so much money off the taxes, can they still do the other work-off for the more?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll have, calling for a vote then on Article number nineteen, both parts A and B. Voting is open, one for yes and two for no. Voting is closed, and the article passes one hundred and forty-one to nine.
Thank you.
Article twenty is the citizens' petition, and so I guess I will ask for a motion, and is the citizen here to... Very good. So, Betsy, would you move the citizens' petition?
Yep, citizens' petition for both sections of the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-three, Section Fifty-nine, effective military service on salary seniority and leave allowances of public employees. I move Article twenty as printed in the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, sir. Would you like to introduce yourself and explain your article?
Hi, my name is Joe Polini, one oh four Summer Street. I'm also an employee for the town of Duxbury, and I'm also part of that twenty-five percent that Mr. Thorpe talked about earlier, of that six hundred and ninety-eight veterans living in town. I've served in the military for fifteen years. I've been in the National Guard. I've deployed multiple times overseas. I've come back to my community, and I'd love to continue to serve my community. Living in the town of Duxbury and working for the town of Duxbury is a pleasure in and of itself. With that being said, we have some archaic laws as opposed to veterans' rights and employment within the town. Currently, the town doesn't have any real state rights towards veterans' employment besides the federal standards. The town actually hasn't voted on veteran employment rights since nineteen forty-one, and that was Chapter seven oh eight of the Massachusetts Soldiers and Sailors Act. Right now, I'm just moving that we adopt the law, Chapter Thirty-three, Section Fifty-nine in Mass General Law. This law was updated in two thousand and eighteen as a part of the Brave Act that Mr. Thorpe talked about earlier. What it does is it extends military service time while you're gone. So say I get called up for duty, or another soldier within the town employment gets called up for service, their employment would be covered while they're away, up to forty days. Right now, currently, the law states that it's only covered for seventeen days, and of that time, there's no normal pay during that time. So you would go with loss of pay during that time. This would cover up to forty days, and I think going forward, this is the better way of doing it and how we should handle our veterans' employment rights. I'm open to any questions, if anybody has any. Barring no questions, I'll step down.
I will ask then for a vote on Article number twenty. When the green light comes on, voting will be open, one for yes, two for no. Voting is now closed, and it passes one hundred and forty-three to ten in overwhelming support. Article twenty-one, Mrs. Sullivan.
Proposed new Alden local historic district and additions to Windsor-Powderpoint local historic districts. I move that the town vote to create new local historic districts to be administered through the Duxbury General Bylaw, Chapter Twelve, and to update the official local historic district map of the town of Duxbury to include the new local historic district as follows: A single-family residential dwelling located at Thirty Powder Point Avenue, owned by Evelyn V Moreno, trustee of the P. Robin Fox Two Thousand Sixteen Trust.
Second.
This was voted by the select board five-zero to recommend. Finance, I need to explain this, zero, well, we did revote it.
We did revote it.
So, yep, we revoted this morning. Oh, I am, I'm tired. Nine-zero to recommend, and you didn't?
We voted, we thought the town buildings were still in the board.
Right.
We voted zero-seven against that.
Okay. Fiscal advisory had voted an earlier rendition of this particular article, not the one that's being presented to you now, as a zero-seven vote. Right?
To this article?
Right.
Okay. And the chair of the board of, Select Board, has some comments to make about this.
This is, this one's been going around a bit of time as well, all right? So when this, this article was originally presented to the board, and we voted in support of that, it included the private property but also town property. And I think retaining Duxbury's rural and historic character is important to all of us, and that's why the Select Board was supportive of placing town buildings in local historic districts and also very much appreciative of the work done by the local historic district commission to do so. However, and it's always, this is the however, right? We're not quite there yet, and so more work needs to be done to get it right. Okay? So that's why the Select Board are now recommending an amendment to the motion to remove the town buildings and retain the private home being added to the Powder Point Historic District. In conclusion, I want to repeat, the Select Board is supportive of local historic districts and the work of the commission. The placing of town buildings in historic district appears to be a no-brainer, pretty obvious, but we need to do some work. To paraphrase Arnie, we'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Motion?
He doesn't have the motion to put it up on the screen.
Oh, okay.
All right. So we're going to call for a...
Another question?
Oh, I am sorry, sir.
Sorry, John. Vinnie Walsh Bay wrote, what are we voting on?
Okay.
Because the article shows four properties. I think you're trying to only vote on one right now?
Correct. If you'll, if you'll work with me here for a second, if you're looking at page thirty-six of your warrant, and down the bottom, it says Article twenty-one, proposed new Alden local historic districts, et cetera. And then you see one, two, three, and four.
Yep.
The only, the only item at this time that is being moved is number four, which is Powder Point, Thirty Powder Point Avenue. The three items that are on the bottom of page thirty-six are not being moved at this time.
So was that the actual motion, or is there an amendment to the existing motion?
That was, that was the motion that was made.
Okay.
And so there wasn't an amendment. They just moved part of what was in the article. And to follow it more clearly, eliminate one, two, and three, and that's exactly what the motion covers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're gonna try that again. We're gonna open voting for Article 21. All those in favor, press one. All those opposed, press two. Voting is closed. Article passes 138 to nine. The next several articles deal with CPC articles. And as in the past, Ms. Morris has, has consented to give us a little talk about CPC and the state of where it is. And in that, she will touch on an awful lot of what is about to come up in the following articles. So, we'll hear her presentation on CPC, and then we will get to work on Article 22.
All right, maybe that goes... Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Holly Morris, and I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. The committee is comprised of Tony Kelso, who is our Town Historian and Member-at-Large, Tag Carpenter from the Historic Commission, Kathy Cross from Open Space, Kathy Palmer, Member-at-Large, David Udi from the Planning Board, and Bree Ling from the Housing Authority, and myself, Conservation Commission. First of all, I'd like to thank John Q., who, for his assistance and guidance to the CPC, and we wish him the very best in his retirement. And I wish to thank Nancy Ruffo and her, who is now the new Conservation Administrator, and Debrae Ballam, who is her assistant, for providing administrative assistance to the CPC. This year, six proposals were presented to the CPC, and we approved three of the proposals: the tennis courts, the Chandler Front Playground, and an appropriation of funds to the Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust. And we are recommending indefinite postponement to the other three. So... Is that the first one? Wait a minute, it's gotta go back. Okay. The Community Preservation Act, which was signed into law in 2000, is a smart-growth tool that provides annual matching funds from the state. The voters approved CPA at the 3% level in 2002 based upon the strong recommendation of the Land Acquisition Task Force. The task force was comprised of Bill Boyd, David Hines, Cap Kane, Sarah Madigan, Frank Manjone, Ed McGlinchey, Jim Merlin, Andrew Rich, Art Votrain, and George Wadsworth. This is a surcharge on your property tax bill after it has been calculated based on the town's tax rate. Our local receipts are matched by the state CPA trust fund, which receives money from the fees at the Registry of Deeds. We chose 3% because only 3% towns are eligible to receive multiple rounds of funding from the state trust fund. CPA enables our town to protect open space so that we can protect our most important resource, which is drinking water, which comes from our sole source, the underground aquifer. Redundancy in well sites is very important because, as we have seen, wells have been shut down due to contamination. We use CPA funds to preserve the semi-rural character of our town, preserve historic structures and landscapes, support housing, and provide recreational opportunities for all ages. Duxbury has been acquiring cranberry bogs since the 70s because farming has played an important role in our history, the landscapes add to the beauty of our town, and we have received a return on the fruit depending on the market. We have put $29 million to work on 60 projects. $10 million of this money has come from state matching funds and $5 million from the state and federal grants. 67% of the funds have gone towards open space protection. We have protected over 1,000 acres of land that protects our groundwater, forests, wetlands, and scenic vistas. And remember, many of the streams in our town float to the bay, which supports a very important shellfish industry and recreation. 18% has been used for historic preservation. 85 of that, 85% of that money has gone towards town-owned properties. 11% has gone to housing programs, which are overseen by the Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust. And 4% has gone to recreation for playing fields, playgrounds, pickleball, and baseball and softball dugouts. I just need some water. Sorry. Okay. Let's see. Oops. Yeah. This just gives you a visual as to how we have spent the money. And you can see that the lion's share has gone towards open space. In 2013, the town undertook three major construction projects: the new middle and high school, the new police station, and expansion of the fire station. A majority of the voters elected to reduce the CPA surcharge to 1%. We still receive state matching funds, but no longer eligible for additional rounds of funding. In 2013, we adopted two exemptions. Property owned and occupied by a person who qualifies for low-income housing or moderate or low-income senior housing is exempt from the CPA surcharge. And the first $100,000 of the value of your property is exempt. Because of the reduction to 1%, we lost nearly $9 million in local surcharge revenue and $2.4 million in state matching funds. We knew in 2019 that a challenge or opportunity was going to incur borrowing. Costs were rising, especially land, and that's what happened in 2021. We had to borrow to address the development threat to the Simmons Farm, and then two other farms came to market. As mentioned, we adopted the Community Preservation Act in 2002 at the 3% level. For five years, we generated $1 million in local surcharge receipts each year, and we were matched one-to-one by the state. As expected, other cities and towns adopted CPA, and now 70% of Massachusetts residents live in CPA communities. In 2013, the surcharge was reduced by 2/3, as were the matching funds, making it more of a challenge to meet threats and opportunities without borrowing. This is just a slide demonstrating our estimated revenues. This is what we're projecting for fiscal year 2024. Surcharge receipts, I'm going to round up, are roughly, we're expecting roughly around $605,000. State matching funds, we hope to get at least $178,000. Administrative expenses, which pays for salaries and consultants, and legal fees, $39,000. And debt service. This is for the three properties. This is the Simmons Farm, the Pink Farm, and the Ricker Farm, because we had to borrow. And the 10% allocation, we are mandated by the Act to put 10% to each of the three accounts in open space, historic, and affordable housing. This leaves a balance of annual estimated revenue of $264,625. This past year, we received a 38.5% match due to state surplus funds. 3% towns that we are ranked with received a 44% match. All right, so... So, currently, right now, we have a debt burden of $2.6 million, which is reducing our annual estimated revenue, which in turn lessens the growth of our undesignated fund balance. The undesignated fund balance, which is our reserve, is now at $216,628. This is the lowest it has ever been. This is just demonstrating how the money is going into the three accounts and what is going to be in each of the accounts for next year. Okay. I'm going to give you a quick slideshow. I know everybody would love to move on here. But first of all, I just want to demonstrate the Wright Building here. This is one of our very first projects. This was mothballed for years. And when we finally adopted CPA, we brought it back to life. The, it's now leased by the Duxbury Rural and Historical Society for their archives, and it holds the Student Union in the back. So, here we go. Oops, well... It's going to go back. Ah, there is a lag, wait a minute. Bluefish River Firehouse, again, thanks to Nancy Bennett. Duxbury Free Library Restoration on the front. Tark Hill, thanks again to Terry Voest and his friends. Old Town Hall Preservation. Simmons Farm, this, we unfortunately had to take out debt for this. World War I Memorial, which was in pieces, and we paid to get it put back together again, thanks to Joe Shea. And Joe Shea was involved in this. Keen Mill, some restoration. Bay Flower and Standish Cemeteries, gravestone restoration at both cemeteries, fencing, and signage. Historic O'Neill Farm, this farm has been in the O'Neill family for eight generations. Wildlands Trust had a lot to do with this program, and we assisted in the acquisition. And it's, if you haven't been there, it's absolutely beautiful. That's a calf. Mary Properties, 17 parcels. This is a working cranberry bog, a number of working cranberry bogs. Berry Brook Hay Fields, which provides hay for the O'Neill Farm. Camp Wing Conservation Land. Again, we acquired this because it really protects the South River, and we carved off three acres of land, which is now the Feinberg Bog Housing Development. Howland's Landing, we acquired five acres to allow better access to the waterfront and stand ashore. Round Pond, and many people know, we've acquired a number of bogs in that area. Pink Cranberry Bogs, this is a recent acquisition. Again, this is, this was targeted way back in 1969, and we were very fortunate to acquire this. Ricker Cranberry Bog, also, we acquired this very recently. This is the Historic Island Creek Fish Ladder. It doesn't look like this. This is a very old photo. We also paid for the, the pickleball courts at Tark Hill and the new ones that are over near the library. The Duxbury Turf Field, we did the site work. We, we also developed the Keen Street Playgrounds and playing fields, softball and baseball dugouts around town. The Delano Farm, this farm was actually slated, I believe, for about a development of 45 houses. We were very fortunate to get it. It has a well field on site. There is a, an affordable home on the property as well. And the, this building is housing for elderly adults. The Grange was also acquired, and an affordable house is in its place. This is the Feinberg Bog Development. It's mixed-income housing that's on the three acres that were camp wing. We did work, we paid for some of the work that was done at the Alden House. This is another in King Caesar. Let me just mention about nonprofits. We are allowed by the statute to provide grants to nonprofits. The nonprofit organizations must demonstrate a public benefit to the town. They must provide matching funds, and they sign an agreement with the town that has a claw-back provision in the event that they sell the property. We are fortunate that the nonprofit organizations own these properties and the town doesn't. Nathaniel Windsor. Bradford House. Isaac Keen Barn, this was actually the largest barn in town at one time. It's now at Crossroads for Kids. First Parish Church, we did the windows and also preserved historic records that are now being held at the Historical Society Archive. American Legion Hall, we did the exterior work on that. And this is what is coming to this town meeting, the next articles. The tennis courts at the Steel Athletic Complex. And the front playground at the Chandler School. For the first 10 years, we put nearly $19 million to work with no borrowing. We protected 700 acres of land for water protection, farming, and recreation, such as the O'Neill Farm, Round Pond Bogs, Camp Wing, restored historic buildings such as the Wright Building and Old Town Hall, developed the Keen Street Fields and Playground, and did the site work for the turf field. And again, no borrowing. And then the reduction in the surcharge in 2013 to 1%. It resulted in a dramatic decline in local surcharge receipts, and 2.4 million state matching funds could have come to Duxbury, but didn't. Since 2013, we have continued our work. Most importantly, the voters prevented a very sizable development on the Simmons Farm in a neighborhood that is also facing a 40B. We are hoping to sell the house, and bids are to be opened next week. The house will have an historic preservation restriction. The fields will be under the care of the Conservation Commission, and Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust is planning to develop two lots. We also had two cranberry farms come to market due to retirements. The town had the right to exercise its right of first refusal and exercise that. And, well, we don't actually exercise that. We recommend to the selectmen that they exercise that. And then you, the voters, make the final decision as to whether we purchase the property or not, or any property. We acquired the working Pink Farm, which has been targeted for preservation since 1969, expanding our conservation of land around the Wright Reservoir and gaining a working bog. And we finally acquired another beautiful working farm, the Ricker Property, which is across the street from North Hill and abuts two well sites. We also secured the right of first refusal on the house lots if the owners choose to sell. That's on both the Ricker and the Pink Properties. We had to borrow $2.6 million for the Simmons Farm and the Pink and Ricker Farms. Our reserves are at their lowest level, and debt service is eroding our revenue. Our undesignated fund balance is less than $217,000. Our undesignated fund balance is less than 217,000. The advantage of going back to 3% is, first of all, we have an obligation to protect our groundwater. It's our responsibility. Only 3% towns receive multiple rounds of state funds. 3% would reduce our debt burden and return the registry of deed fees back to Duxbury. This would enable us to respond in a more timely manner to development pressures and better planning. Preservation of our unique history is important. This attracts buyers who value history and attracts tourism dollars. CPA supports housing needs for seniors, young families, veterans, and people with disabilities. And this is the responsibility of the Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust, which receives funds for that purpose. It can provide recreational opportunities for all ages, and it can remove the burden on the town's general fund. CPA is a good investment. Again, protection of our water is vital. This is also important to your property value. CPA supports sound planning and balanced growth. The rating agencies, Moody's and Standard Empors, recognize CPA towns, which has an impact on our rating and borrowing costs. Matching funds are an excellent return on your investment. And the hard facts are, the median household is currently paying an annual surcharge of $79. This would triple if we were to go to 3%. The quarterly, the quarterly surcharge at 3% for the median house would be $60. At the October special town meeting, two-thirds of the voters voted to put the question for the return to 3% on the ballot for March 25th. And in closing, Duxbury is a beautiful town, largely due to generations before us. During a recession in the '70s, the voters purchased what is now the North Hill Conservation Land, which was slated, slated for 700 homes. So think about that. And if it wasn't for the CPA, Duxbury would also look very different. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Sullivan, may we have a motion under Article 22?
CPC Operating Fund, Article 22. I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $283,365 from the Community Preservation Act Fund, fiscal year 2024, anticipated revenues for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the Community Preservation Act, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, for the administrative expenses and charges for operation in the amount of $39,140, and for debt service in the amount of $244,225 for the Community Preservation Committee, all for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024, inclusive.
Second.
Select Board voted 5-0 to recommend. Finance Committee voted 9-0 to recommend.
Thank you. Are there any questions? And we'll ask for a vote on Article, on Article 22. Vote 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is closed. Article passes 138 to 8. Article 23, Mrs. Sullivan.
Article 23, CPC allocations. I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $234,853.20 from the Community Preservation Act Fund, fiscal year 2024, anticipated revenues for the purpose of meeting the requirements of the Community Preservation Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 6, with $78,284.40 of set amount reserved for open space, $78,284.40 of set amount reserved for community housing, and $78,284.40 of set amount reserved for historic resources.
Second.
Select Board voted 5-0 to recommend. Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Seeing that there are no questions, I'll ask for a vote on Article 23. Voting is open, 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is closed. Article passes 144 to 8. Article 24, Mrs. Sullivan.
CPC Steel Athletic Complex Tennis Court Replacement. I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $138,819 from Community Preservation Act Fund, fiscal year 2024, anticipated revenues for the replacement of six tennis courts at the Steel Athletic Complex, including incidental and related expenses, such funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
Select Board voted 5-0 to recommend. Finance Committee 9-0 to recommend. Fiscal Advisory 5-0 to recommend.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote on Article... Oh, we do have one. I apologize, sir. Upper, second deck on my left.
Just one question. Holly, thank you very much, wonderful presentation. When were the courts built?
Over 20 years, I believe.
20 years ago.
Any other questions? All right, we'll try that again. I'll ask for a vote, 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is closed. Article passes 140 to 11. Article 25, Mrs. Sullivan.
Chandler School Front Playground Replacement. I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $100,000 from the Community Preservation Unreserved Undesignated Fund Balance for the replacement of the Chandler School Front Playground, including all incidental and related expenses, such funds to be expended under the direction of the town manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
Some, may I add something to this?
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to comment, this playground is the one that was, is being dedicated to Laney Lad, and I feel honored that the CPC was asked for some funding on this project.
Select Board voted 5-0 to recommend. Finance 9-0 to recommend, and Fiscal Advisory 5-0 to recommend.
And, and as an aside, this is the group that has been fundraising and, and putting not only significant time, but significant funds into this project as well. That having been said, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, press 1. Voting is closed. Article passes 143 to 5. Article 26, Mrs. Sullivan.
Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust Loring Bog, East Street Reimbursement. I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Article 26. Voting is open, press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Voting is closed. Article passes 129 to 2. It is indefinitely postponed. Article 27, Mrs. Sullivan.
Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust Temple Street Reimbursement. I move to indefen... Did I just read that again?
No, it's in the one.
Okay. Move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
It looked familiar. Select Board 4-0 to indefinitely postpone. Finance Committee 9-0 to indefinitely postpone.
So Article 27, we've moved to indefinitely postpone. I'm going to call for a vote at this point. If you're in favor of indefinitely postpone, press 1. I'm sorry.
Why, it's IP.
Well, sir... I'll tell you what, we've, we've already opened, opened voting, but I will get an, you will get an explanation when we get done. So voting closed. We will indefinitely postpone 130 to 3. I apologize, I didn't hear you call out or stand at a, on a microphone. So Fernando, are you going to address it? Okay. Select Board, Select Chair will, will...
Yeah. I'm the, I'm one of the trustees of the Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust, and the reason why we recommended ourselves to, to, to vote to indefinitely postpone is the peril of state of the CPC funds, right? So let's hope that the vote goes the right way on Saturday, March 25th. Thank you.
Article number 28, Mrs. Sullivan.
Housing Trust Transfer. I move that the town, upon recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriate the sum of $10,000 from the Community Preservation Housing Reserve Fund Balance for the purpose of funding Duxbury Affordable Housing Trust's administrative expenses related to its affordable housing activities.
Second.
Select Board voted 5-0 to recommend. Finance Committee 9-0 to recommend.
Are there any questions? Hearing, hearing none, I'll call for a vote on Article number 28. All those in favor, press 1. Voting is closed. Motion passes 125 to 4. Article 29, always my most favorite article, because it's the last one.
Uh-huh. Rehabilitation of the Girl Scout House. I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
Select Board, 5-0 to indefinitely postpone. Finance 9-0, indefinitely postpone.
So we moved, it's been moved and seconded. We have a question up on the second deck on my left.
At the risk of being very unpopular for extending the meeting, Lou Siegel, 1174 Tremont Street, and father of a Girl Scout, just curious why?
The reason that we postpone this, and I, first, I want to thank Joan Reiser, who is the scout leader, for doing all the footwork that she did in getting estimates for us, is that it only addressed the front of the building. This is a town-owned building, and it needs work. And so I contacted Christina Knowles about this, who is our facilities manager, and we discussed it at length. It probably needs a fair amount of work, electrical, plumbing, flooring, ceilings, roofing, ADA compliance perhaps, and therefore, we felt that it's, it's a much bigger project, and it would make an excellent CPA project, but the whole building needs to be reviewed. I hope I answered your question.
We have a question, lower level on my right.
Dwayne Kingsley, Lakeshore Drive, Duxbury. Is this meaning that it's probably not ever going to be done because it's not as popular as the tennis courts or something? I'm just trying to get the order of priority on what gets dismissed and what gets accepted.
It's indefe... Asking that be indefinitely postponed, which means that hopefully, we can look at it in the future.
Any other questions? I don't know if people are going to the microphone or leaving. I think they're leaving. Sir, you know, no question? All right. In that case, I'm going to call for a vote on Article 29. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, press 1. Voting is closed. The article to indefinitely postpone is, is passed, 125 to 6. I'll therefore, that completes the business for warrant for the annual town meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Sonny, die. All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The ayes have it. (applause).